Hi. Anyone?
I call to order the Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, July 19th, 2022, and the time is 6 o'clock. Ethical principles and parliamentary procedures. Trustee Johnson, would you like to do the invocation?
Sure. Gerald, thank you for this day here at Township for the great weather and thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet together as a free country here. I pray that you be with those who are out defending our safety, who are out defending our freedom, who make things possible, and have this great life we have here. I pray that you can be with also those families as their loved ones are gone doing just what they need to do. Amen.
Please join with the pledge of allegiance.
By the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McKee?
Yes, here. I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I move to amend the agenda to include the following. One, an update on development in sewer capacity, union negotiations, and employee handbook. I believe the board should be updated and have input. Number two, have a discussion on Pike Street as far as what we're, what we want to move forward with, with community input. Number three, refugee road discussion. As you know, we've lost the $3.5 million, or we have an obligation, will, $3.5 million and lost the development that was slated to pay for that. I think the board needs to discuss if we're moving forward on that. Number four, discussion on the Laurel Drive 4.2 acres. This is old business and I believe we need an update and to finally get a resolution on that for the township and the residents. Five, records commission. We are deficient as our audit had indicated and also we need to update our video retention unless we want to continually buy hard drives and replace them, which is just a unnecessary cost. Again, six, food truck. I'm hearing more and more people request that and I think we should, as a board, at least have a discussion. If you don't want to move forward, say so. Number seven, executive session regarding some office staff not compliant with communications and documents. Number eight, discussion on Reynoldsburg annexation. I know I was directed to speak with the attorney directly, but I believe this needs to be board discussion and determined by the board. Number nine, social media. I believe we need to move forward on providing that information to the public and social media is the way to. We should go. Ten, assistance with records system. I believe the board needs to discuss how we can take care of the outstanding issues with the records that we do have. Eleven, discuss registration and regulation of transient vendors. We're allowed to do that. There's a lot of call for that in the community, so I'd like to see if the board would want to move forward on that. And then twelve, a discussion on the light trespass issue of Blue Monkey and the adjacent motel and if we're going to be enforcing the zoning on that.
Is there a second? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to approve the minutes from June 7th, 2022, June 14th, 2022, June 28th, 2022 as meeting presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve these separately, not together, because I do have issues with June 7th and June 14th, however, not with the special on June 28th. So I move that we approve the June 28th minutes as presented and then deal with the other two separately.
Is there a second? Discussion? Roll call.
On this, the top of these.
On the minutes? Yeah, discussion. My objection to June 7th and June 14th is again, it's not following Robert's rules of order, including all the options made, so they are deficient. We should follow.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, a second. Sorry about that.
There's a discussion, that's what we were having. I was wondering why you wanted.
Sorry about that.
But separately, okay.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
The one thing on here, now that I see it better, down here you have the June 28th. On the one it says, I mean, on June 14th it says, or versus the 21st.
Sorry, it's July, it's June 28th, June 4th, June 7th, June 14th, June 28th.
June 21st. No, I have the wrong, I have the wrong day.
There's a wrong, yeah, that's the only one I know.
Okay.
Sorry. There's one says the 21st, so on the minute. I just want to clarify that.
June 28th.
They should have been the 14th, 21st, and 28th. So the 14th needs to be 21st. Sorry about that.
And the 28th.
It's only on this?
Yeah.
On this.
That's right.
Yeah, you should, the minutes I gave you have the right header since the agenda I have wrong. It's the 14th, 21st, and 28th. Those are the numbers you have. The 7th, 21st, and 28th.
Right.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Is that any of the issues on the list?
Sorry.
So do we have to redo that? Because that's the wrong date?
She can read your motion.
I can read it, yeah. I can just do it within a day.
Well, the one that's wrong is that you 21st, 21.
Yeah, just the 12th. It should have been, instead of 14th, it should have been 21st. Yeah. So I move to approve the minutes for June 7th, June 21st, and June 28th.
As presented.
As presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we still need to go back to discussion?
Yes.
Well, are the prior discussions going to be included in the minutes of my objection with the violation of Robert's rules? As long as they are, then that's mine, or that's my discussion. I disagree on the June 7th and 21st due to the not following Robert's rules.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay, so let's roll call.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. McKee? Or Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Thank you. Larry Taylor with Tribal Energy is here to provide information on the Ettna Township aggregation programs. Please present with us today. Thank you for coming, Larry.
Thank you for having me. Good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Taylor. I'm with Trade Bell Energy and I was looking back at some of the records and we have been the broker consultant for Ettna Township since 2013, so that's pretty, pretty great. We appreciate that. I just wanted to bring that up, but I am the new program administrator for the gas and electric aggregation program for the township and the gas aggregation program, although it is still intact, is because of Volunteer Energy who was supplying it filed bankruptcy. Because of that, all of the customers that were in that went back to the utility and are being serviced by Columbia Gas and the suppliers that they have picked had the normal standard choice offer rate, so the majority of the residents wouldn't know that anything happened. That was out of, uh, Trebell's, um, there was nothing that we could have done to prevent that, but they had gone back to the utility and are flowing with Columbia Gas. The electric aggregation program is still intact. That's being serviced by Energy Harbor at a rate of .0467 cents per kilowatt and the good news about that is for the, for the folks that are in the aggregation program is that the price to compare for AEP has gone up to .0723. So that's a significant savings and today I also went back and did a little bit of number crunching and over the last 24 months, the electric aggregation program, the residents that are in that program combined have saved $285,000 and that's significant and that's exciting and wanted to make sure I let you all know that. The gas and electric market both are extremely volatile right now. Just several months ago, the commodity price for natural, natural gas was a dollar eighty. A few weeks ago, it was $9 and something. Today it's 750, a couple of weeks ago it was 550. It's, it's very volatile. Same with electric. As you can see, the electric rates have gone up. It too is a very volatile market and there's a few processes that Trade Bell Energy wants to introduce to the trustees that would help us to make quick decisions and be able to get basic forms signed easily, like the Columbia Gas customer list, the AEP customer list, those kind of things. Basically, they're just normal, basic forms that need to be signed and the process of doing that is something that I would like to come back on August 2nd and present to you all to, to review. This, this language that Trade Bell is, is putting into the EMA will also give us the authority to act quickly. Because the market is so volatile, we need to be able to act quickly to lock in a rate that's going to be beneficial, whether it's gas or electric, beneficial for the residents. I am planning on emailing this new proposal to the president or I can go ahead and mail it out to everybody to make sure everybody gets that and as I mentioned, I'd like to come back on August 2nd to discuss and hopefully finalize the, the changes that we are talking about, looking at in the agreement.
I have a question.
Sure.
The gas, um, is there, are they in the middle of a contract with the gas company or is it their contract expired from the company that went out of business? Because you mentioned gas, then you mentioned electric.
The gas technically didn't expire, but because Volunteer Energy went out of business, the PUC have determined that those customers just needed basically to just go back to the utility, so they went back to Columbia Gas. Once they're back to Columbia Gas, which is literally a flip of the switch, they are put into the standard choice offer program, which is the regular program at the regular Columbia Gas delivery rate.
Okay. And the electric, is it still intact right now? You said there's still.
Yes, the electric is still intact. It goes through. It goes through September of 2023 at that fixed rate. So the good thing about that is, is that not only do the residents get to enjoy that low rate this summer, they get to enjoy that rate next summer too, because Scott Bel Castro and the guys back at Trade Bell say that the futures look like it's, it's going to continue to do this, but ultimately it's, it's going to stay high, so that's good for the residents. It's a great rate.
Can you? Can you lock, I mean, because right now it says the market's open down. How do you lock into a guaranteed rate for us?
With the electric?
With either one.
Well, right now, that's a great question. Right now with the gas, um, we do not want to do anything right now with the gas. We're literally a holding period. Anything that we do now would not ultimately be beneficial for the residents. It's just too volatile. So you might, if the rate right now is 750, we might be able to go out and do a rate of 690, but because of the futures, that's, they don't believe that that's going to be beneficial in the long term with the gas. With the electric, that rate was, um, they went out and got that rate a year ago and that rate is the same rate, fixed rate, which is good all the way through September of 2023, so that doesn't change at all.
So it's a two-year fixed rate for gas or electric?
I don't, I don't know what it was. I don't know if it was two or three years with the electric. I just know that it, um, it's in full force, great rate, and it goes through September of 2023 with the electric.
Okay, and you're asking us to approve you going out there and taking care of the gas now and you'll determine when to, to jump on that rate and lock something in. So you're, you're looking at the authority. We wouldn't have any say on that. You, you guys would just have that authority to, okay, we're going to lock it now.
No, you would absolutely have a say in that. I'm not an attorney, but I believe what it says is that we have a rate in there. Let's say that the rate is 80 cents per CCF and you guys would say collectively, okay, great, anything that Trade Bell can go out and get that's less than 80 cents per CCF, we're going to be okay with that. Our intentions are not to, hey, call you up and say, hey, we locked you in at 79. Our intentions are, is to have an understanding because of the market that when it does drop and it drops down low enough, let's say for example below the 80 cents per CCF, then possibly you all would determine who we would call, but we would call and say, hey, this is Larry from Trade Bell. The market has dropped. It's, we can do a 550 and we recommend that we do that. Can we have your permission to do so?
Okay, then what if the rates drop to say 60 cents, but you'd be locked, everybody would be locked in at that, the 80, correct, or 79 or? It's a two-year term. So if the rates do continue to drop, you're locked in at that higher rate, is what I'm saying, correct?
Whatever rate we lock in at, that would be there for that period of time.
Okay.
Whether we agree on two, three, whatever the, the term is. Uh, and yes, the market, if, let's say for example, we did agree that .7 was the number and 12 months from now, the market might dip below that.
Yeah, I understand that, okay. And I know right now customers, they can choose their own, they can choose other providers and suppliers and that on their own, but what you're saying is, and I've heard before, it's the mass purchasing to be able to get those lower rates. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then your, like Volunteer Energy, we have Trade Bell and Volunteer Energy was doing the gas part. How do you make your money? Are you charging a premium on those? If it's 80 and you're buying at, at 60 or you're charging 70, that's, that's your spread that, how are you making, how, how are you making money?
As the broker consultant, we've always been paid by the supplier. So that the supplier pays us. And I don't know if it's relevant or not, but when we go out to bid or go out and look, we use every supplier that we have on our fingertips and we're to go out and present saying, hey, look, we have 2,000 customers that we need a price on, we're at the township, and they all bid on that and we need to come back and let you know what those rates are.
Mike is not saying you guys to do it, but you were incentivized to lock in a rate because without anything locked in and that supply being provided, you, you're not getting any, any, any funds. So I would be concerned that someone could, again, not their company, but lock in a higher rate just to get going when in reality it should, maybe you should have waited for a lower rate than that. I mean, I, you guys have been doing this since 2013 for Etna?
Yes.
I mean, I, I mean, that's almost 10 years now. I, I think we should continue to look at information from this company, but I know there's other companies out there too that we should solicit information from before making any decision.
Well, right now, well, right now, um, the agreement that we have with the township is good in full force through May of 2023.
So May of 20, okay, but if we're, if we do something with the gas, that's going to lock in even further, correct? Or are you saying the agreement's not going to change that May 2023?
I guess what I'm saying.
You're just looking at the gas and that it's not extending that May 2023 agreement?
It would actually, it would extend out to the end of whatever that agreement is.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think if you just do proper due diligence and talk to other companies, especially after nine years of a single company.
And the residents can't opt out anytime, correct, without it?
Correct. They can, they can opt out at any time and they can also opt in, okay, at any time as well.
Do you know how many people opt out? Because I know, I've heard it can be a difficult process and not many do and that's, I, that's why companies don't want to opt in, because people don't opt in. It's, you, you throw them in there and just hope people don't opt out or, you know, basically the township's doing their thinking of saying, you know, this is the best thing for you, which if it is, that's great, but again, I think we should be cautious in however we want to.
I, I would agree. I think you, you have a, a right to do the due diligence, um, but just to make sure we're on the same page, we have an agreement through May of 2023 and we go out and bid this out to all the suppliers. So it's not like we go to two suppliers and, you know, we go out and do what's in the best interest of the, of the residents. We've been in business for 13 years. We have over 160 communities and a great track record of success. And again, I just want to bring up that $285,000 in savings is a tremendous amount of money on the electric aggregation and, and we're doing an excellent job and.
What, one question, what, it would extend that May 2023 contract, what would it extend it to, are you proposing?
Whatever the term of the gas aggregation that went into force, if we determine that it's going to be a 12-month aggregation program, it would extend out depending on when we started it. So if we started it in March.
So you're not looking at.
It would go out 10 months.
You're not looking at like the electric two, three years and extending it to three years?
Unless, unless Scott Bel Castro at Trade Bell comes back and says, look, I think it would be in the best interest for the community to enter into a three-year agreement and here's why, and if you folks agree, then it would be a three-year agreement, but we have, we have options, but ultimately we want to do whatever is in the best interest.
Which, which I, like I said, more information's better and I, I think one important thing is education to the residents and also resident feedback, you know, more than just a blurb on, on the agenda and really trying to get that information out there. That's why having social media would be beneficial and, and that of informing people and getting their opinions. Again, you know, it could be the best company in the world and, you know, the right company for us, but I think do a proper due diligence, we should speak to other companies that can provide the same and just see what's out there, just like your home insurance, you know, or auto insurance. You may be happy with it, but shop around and talk to others.
Ms. McKee, have a question. Can you talk about, more about the lists that you want access to?
Yeah, um, once a year, sometimes twice a year, we'll send out a mailer and that mailer, for example, we're preparing mailers now for a lot of our communities that simply say, hey, you are not in the Ettna Township aggregation program and the price to compare is 723. We suggest that you take a look at getting into the program and in order to do those mailers, we have to request a list from either Columbia Gas or AEP and typically in the past, when we request that, we, we give that information to you and then it goes through whoever and somebody signs it and it takes, sometimes that takes time and it's not something that, um, it's, it's very basic information, but it's something that AEP and Columbia Gas both require. So that was just an example of one of the processes that we, instead of having somebody have to sign that, we approve that way ahead of time, so when the time comes, we just take care of it. It just takes another thing off of the trustee's plate they don't have to worry about.
So basically you just need our approval for them to give you that list? Is there not, could you hand that out to anybody?
Oh, no, no, no.
What is the detail on that? Like how much detail does that have? Does it just have a name and an address or does it have our usage monitor?
Yeah, I'm sure it has usage. I'm not sure what's on that list. It just, we simply request and say, hey, send us all the people, people and residents at Ettna Township that are not in the aggregation program and don't currently have a supplier. So let's, if you have people moving in, people moving out, and let's say that's 412 people, then we just get that list and mail out a letter and says, hey, you can take advantage of the, the special rate that the township is negotiating type of thing.
And is that why? Because I know there's a lot of door-to-door salespeople trying to get people to switch and they don't have that information. That's why they want to see a bill so they can get that information. And another reason why I wanted to bring that up about we could control that, so I think we should.
And I'm not sure if I mentioned it, so if I did, I want to quickly mention it. I'm going to put together everything and send it out to you all, so you'll have plenty of time to look at it in advance and we can discuss it on August 2nd. You had mentioned earlier, and I agree with you, that, you know, we want to, we want you, you guys to make an informed decision and a lot of times in these scenarios, hey, sign here and I'm trying, I'm trying to not do that. So we'll provide you with everything that you will need to be able to have an opportunity to ask questions before the next meeting and, and we'll go from there.
Do you know when you'd be able to provide that information? Because I would like to also provide that to the residents ahead of time so they can come fully informed with their questions.
Yeah, it won't take but a few days.
Okay.
I don't want to stick my foot in the mud.
No, that's.
I'm pretty sure I can get that to you next week sometime.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much, Larry.
Right, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Public comments are limited to three minutes. Are the public, uh, public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Please come up to the podium and state your name, address for the record, please.
Oh, please, ma'am. Please, sir.
Judy Capmeyer, 29 Rome, of course, southwest. Okay, um, I, I guess when I looked at the agenda on the, online, I forgot, I didn't realize it was a second site, so some of the site had pre-pairs, so I'll try to eliminate it as I go along. But at the last township meeting on July 5th, I asked about agenda items that suddenly disappear going from new business to no business. So most importantly, I was referring to the update on the Reynoldsburg annexation and when Mr. Evans presented all 12 items, you know, an additional 12 items, a little dismay that there wasn't any discussion on it. And that's, that's a bad on you two not to even accept. Can understand you may not want to add an additional 12 items to your agenda tonight, but pick a couple. You know, some of them have been coming up over and over again and some of them are worth discussion. They're not, you know, to just totally ignore things is disrespectful to us as residents personally. So I also proposed a resolution that brought forward about the security camera, so I'm glad to see that that is on the agenda. And I would also like to mention that with the harassment policy that was proposed, you know, this would be also something that would protect the accuser and the accused. So it's a, seems to me to be a win-win. And I also noticed under new business that 13, over $13,000 is being requested for a brief firework. brief fireworks show. I'd rather see that money put toward security campus. I would consider that more of a priority. And then I will keep bringing up exclusionary zones for solar and wind in Etna Township, because this protects us from becoming a township famous for warehouses and utility farms. What's to consider? Let's talk about that. Let's get a resolution together. And in addition to that, I just printed off this handy-dandy little thing. California is now having issues after being in the solar business for over 20 years, because they're having trouble with the recycling of those. On the plus side, they can recapture $2 to $4 worth of materials per panel, except that the expertise that it takes to extract that and the machinery is exorbitant. So before we go into all of this, I think that those are things that really need to be discussed. Last week, I did attend an Ohio Site Planning Board meeting about the proposed Flint Grid battery storage project over on Job Street, and that does affect us, by the way. And so it's, to my dismay, there were only three people that spoke, and all three were totally in favor of it. None of them lived in Lucky County, so that interesting. And the, the construction people are from Colorado, and so this is just, you know, people coming in to our community and raping our land. So I just mentioned this because I think as Etna Township residents, we need to be aware of this. When the Ohio Site Planning Board puts out a meeting, and they don't necessarily tell the world about it, you have to look for the information. So these things can just sneak up on us. Be aware.
Thank you, Mr. Capmire. Do you have a, an email link or something to that study from California you can provide me?
Sure. Actually, it's the-
I can, I can get it afterwards, but I would like to see that. Thank you.
My name is Josh Yardley. I live at 96 Nantucket. I was here at the last meeting. I made some suggestions or recommendations on ways to enhance the website. I want to thank you for uploading the minutes, that was really helpful. I also realized that making those suggestions, that I was just adding more work to your plate, so I kind of thought maybe I would take this as an opportunity to volunteer, if at all possible, for the township. I could work with your webmaster, whoever's responsible for your website, to kind of build that out a little bit better. I do have some experience with website building, so I could add like the project management tool that, you know, I referenced in the last meeting. Other things that I think could potentially be added to the website might be a trustee blog. Would give you all the opportunity to maybe go into greater depth in what we usually discuss here in the meeting about some of the specific information that a lot of us are kind of interested in knowing about what you're all working on and things, to help us make informed decisions in the future. Additionally, maybe some press releases whenever there's, you know, some really exciting news coming out. For example, there was a brief discussion in the last meeting about parks. This is maybe my own ignorance, but I didn't realize that we were going to get a park. Really exciting stuff, actually, I think, because if you go back and look at the original comprehensive plan of the most recent one, the thing that people were most interested in seeing here in this township was parks and open spaces. So the fact that you all accomplished that, I think, is noteworthy and something that maybe you could present with a little bit more pomp and circumstance, perhaps. It could be done on social media, but I find Facebook to be a little bit toxic, and also the way that it's structured in terms of the timeline makes it easy for you to sort of lose track of information. However, website, if it's properly organized, allows you to find that information more quickly. So in addition to that, as, as long as we're on the topic of parks, I live in New England Akers, over on the other side of town. There's a lot of children who live in our neighborhood, and there's no playgrounds nearby. There's one at the church that's kind of down on Palmer and Taylor, but it's, there's no shade, it gets really hot, it's not very familiar. It might be kind of nice as long as we're in the process of building parks, to maybe situate one over on that side of town. I know that all the families in, in that neighborhood would really appreciate it. In addition to that, I saw that we're getting a Chipotle, very exciting. I've also seen online that we're getting a Starbucks, great. Before living in Etna, I lived in a small town just outside of Boston called Winthrop. Nobody knows about Winthrop. It's a little hidden gem. I think Etna could also be a little hidden gem. One of the nice things about Winthrop was that there was no chains at all. All the restaurants were family-owned, there was a supermarket that was family-owned, all of the, you know, the handyman shops and such and such were all family-owned. I believe that the township orchestrated the zoning in that way. So it would be interesting to see if Etna could do anything similar. If not that, make a greater effort to recruit more small businesses to town. I also, I don't know how you could potentially do that, maybe reach out to commercial real estate agents, say, "Hey, do you have anybody who's looking to situate, I don't know, a brewery someplace?" You know, come to Etna, we'll give you whatever kind of deal we're giving to the large organizations, you know, that have situated themselves here. I also used to live in Germany, in the southwest, and in a state called Baden-Württemberg. Baden-Württemberg actually owned a brewery, was a state-owned brewery in that part of the country. Great beer. I don't know if it's possible, but if Etna would like to maybe have the first township-owned diner, yeah, maybe you all could sort of invest some money and, and maybe a business owner, give them a loan, and become the owner of a diner maybe in town. I think it's just a way to kind of get all this jump started, and maybe-
Thank you, Josh, I appreciate it.
Uh, one more just small thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a biggie back, I always just said. I agree, it's a very long list, it's kind of, I don't know, I'd say daunting or intimidating, I'm not quite sure of what Mark's presented. What I would suggest is, this is a relationship, any good relationship is built on compromise. Maybe one way to begin with compromise is to schedule just in one week or over a two-week period, a few more meetings, knock out this list, and then-
Thank you.
We'll reset.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Yes.
Appreciate your help.
Somebody else has their comments?
Talk Monday 10254, Tollgate Road. I'm going to read this because we're having- Before any more development on Tollgate Road in front of FedEx takes place, this panel trustees needs to require the developer to assure that light and noise pollution be such as not to interfere with neighboring residences. The people on Lynch Road, I don't live there, but I feel sorry for them because of what is, what FedEx has done to them. You folks act like you're listening to us up here, but oftentimes, I think nobody's listening. Additionally, there are no through trucks signs posted both eastbound and westbound on State Route 204, as well as northbound on Tollgate Road in Violet Township. Why is there no such posting on southbound Tollgate Road? That's all I have.
To answer your question briefly, Violet Township is a different type of township. They have the authority to regulate their roads, we do not, and that's one of the issues we're going to have on Refugee Road. Atascol can regulate the northern part, the one park going west, we can't regulate the park going east.
But we used to have a, a no-through-trucks on before FedEx was open?
And it might be something that we look into becoming a legitimate ownership concept and giving that authority, but I agree with you on the light pollution, I've been pushing for that, it has not been enforced, and I hope it will be soon.
So you don't expect to put any no-through-trucks signs on southbound Tollgate Road next year?
I don't know if we have the authority to, but if we do, I, I'm fully in agreement with it. I'll look into it, but I need cooperation if we're going to move forward on anything, including that light pollution, and that, I haven't been getting that.
Like I say, sometimes nobody's listening.
I-
Ivan and Keith Bobo for Pre-Monor Drive. We just wanted to see what the resolution is, or if anything has been done with the 4.2 acres that is behind our houses, that all of us are interested in buying.
I offered to put it on the agenda, they didn't want to put it on here to discuss. I think we need a resolution to that.
This has been dangled in front of us for-
30 years.
30 years? We've been here about 30 years. We were approached about five years ago that it would be a possibility for us to buy the land. There are 102, 400 landlords there, homeowners, that are interested in buying this land. And we were all approached about five years ago by Carlisle, and all of us are interested in it, and we would just like to have a resolution to this. We'd like to get it done.
Now, I do have a question, because from what I understood, where your land is, you have to get 50% of your community to sign off.
Right.
51%?
51%.
51? So is that something that happened in the past? I mean, I don't know if it stopped in its tracks or-
What had happened is-
Laura knows what's going on.
What had happened was in the pandemic hit.
Okay.
When it was going to be, they're going to go door-to-door and get 51%. The pandemic hit.
Okay, so-
No one could do anything then.
When, when they do the door-to-door, do they have to have somebody there write their own spot to notarize you guys' signatures?
That, that was our understanding, yes.
Okay.
Now, we did have a meeting just before the pandemic, and there were, I don't know, probably 25, 30 of us here, and they did sign a paper-
We got about 20 signatures around that time.
20, okay. They did sign the, the petition that they had no problem with it, and it was notarized at that time. And after the pandemic, it just kind of dropped off.
So are the same residents still in that community, or do you guys get new residents?
I think we had two new ones, Erin and Shaw.
I think she's made the whole community, we may have to start over and maybe get the list together.
Oh, I said entire community.
Have you gotten an opinion from the prosecutor on that?
Yeah, I have to start it over, it's too old.
Okay. My, my concern is, you were here, I believe, two months ago, and you were told you'd look into it, and the board, some members don't know anything about it. We need to move forward on this, we can get this done quickly. I've even volunteered to help, you all agreed to, you know-
Right, right.
But the questions, she's not familiar with, and I'm saying that, that we need to move this forward. I want to move it forward, I need cooperation. I've even volunteered, I collected over 500 signatures on the referendum, I can collect signatures and, I've, I've discussed with you-
Well, that's good, and you do that.
It takes more than just a signature, you have to ask someone there on campus to notarize it, it's not, it's a single-
And you can do a dry, you can do a dry mop, paper and a-
Laura, I'm just trying to explain the process, if you're around me, be quiet.
No, no, I understand the process, I've talked to you before about it.
I'll be quiet, I'll be quiet.
But I want to, is the board-
Guys, you know, all of us bickering.
Are we going to move forward?
We have no problem moving forward, but I would like, love to see the signatures get taken care of, and a notary, can you get a notary that can do that with it?
I asked to put this on the agenda, and you refused. What, are we gonna, if I do the work, is this board going to entertain this and move forward? Are we going to discuss what compensation they're going to pay for the land? We need to agree that before we go through the whole process, so we should have that discussion here now.
That's exactly right. We're not, I'm, I'm not against that, whatever we can do for the land, but if we can get the signatures, that's the most important.
Then put it on the agenda so we can discuss it.
Getting those signatures.
We were told two, two months ago, last time we reviewed, that it was going to go on the pandemic, and it hasn't.
No, that's each time it hasn't.
Plus, it was our understanding, and Laura was going to be covering it.
Yeah, I was trying to explain that, Mr. Evans. I'm, I'm not going to talk without that.
I get you, I get you. Believe me, I get you.
Laura, please.
It's getting really old. I got you the information you asked for, there's nothing more I can use.
Mr. Vance, you have anything on this, please?
I had a conversation with Mr. Bobo last week, I met him before the meeting today. He has due a letter this week from me to clarify, yes, we do need more than 50% of the signatures, we need to confirm how we're going to achieve that before we can take the next steps.
So we're waiting for then, that somebody can get out there and get the signatures.
Correct, that's exactly right, exactly right.
And is Mr. Vance going to take care of that?
Whatever, it just, no, we were all set to do it, the other trustees, Mr. Crow, it was before we were set to do it, but we haven't got the signatures out yet.
Same as those candidates. Right, and now, now we're pushing forward again, so.
President McKee?
Yes.
We have no issue whatsoever if Trustee Evans wants to help them collect the 51% of the signatures.
Right, but we need to get a notary that can go with him to do that, that's the big deal. Get the notary, you have to pay for one to go out, is there anybody that can volunteer there?
This, this is why I say this needs to be proper, I don't discuss it-
We are discussing it now, Mr. Evans, please.
But this is public comments, if people-
It's mine, it's mine, we're discussing it.
And, sorry, he's going to change the rules, but, but whatever costs, whatever we're selling to them should cover the costs to the township. So we have to determine what those costs are.
Exactly.
So are we going to do that? And again, it should be a proper agenda, I don't, to discuss.
President McKee, once again, I mean, Trustee Evans can put together all the specifics, provide it to the board trustees, we'll get it out in your packet, it'll be an agenda item, we'll discuss the specifics, his proposals, et cetera, to make this work.
Excuse, Mr. Vance, it's-
It's, you're in complete control of whatever-
Mr. Vance, please, you're not trustee here. We need to discuss as a board how we're going to approach this before we just put everything together. We can't operate under, like, the fireworks. We're, I'm going to do this, this is what it is, vote on it, that's it.
Again-
Are we going to hear a discussion of what funds are we going to charge them, or are we going to stick with the-
Well, that's what you should be doing, since you said you could take the project-
I have the information, so are you, are we going to talk?
Where's the information?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, but why didn't you present it to us? You've never presented us with the information.
You, you and Laura said that you guys were dealing with this, that, two months ago, so-
Mr. Evans, that's not true.
Put it on the agenda, we can discuss it.
And President McKee, I will send that letter out before this Friday.
Sir?
I will send that letter up before Friday.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Off topic. What Mr. Taylor was saying with Trey Bell Energy, if a customer decides to opt in, you guys accept this aggregation, and we decide to opt in, and after a year, there's a contract for three years, after a year, we think, okay, this isn't working for us, we want to opt out.
Yes.
Which he did say we can opt out at any time. My question is, is there going to be a penalty to us? I know some companies do charge us a penalty.
He said there was, that was the question I asked, and he said there was not a penalty.
They can negotiate, or we negotiate into the contract, and before, we told them, we're negotiating in the past, we told them, "Take that out." There was definitely, we said, "You can't have that here, you can't have these things there," and that's up to us, negotiate the contract with them, not just them throw something at us. So that would be included in it.
Okay, okay, I understand that. So you're fine, go back, just let us know about the property, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much. So you'll get a letter out, so Mr. Vance?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, once you get the letter out, Mr. Evans, I guess he's going to threw off the, the packet together.
So, so I'm supposed to work with the consultant, it's not working with the meeting? What was the point of this letter? Let's have, put this on the agenda so we can have a proper word discussion next meeting. Thank you.
Gary Burkle, 254 Trail East. I wanted to address or have a few comments and concerns about the fireworks that were being proposed on tonight's agenda. I enjoy fireworks as much as anyone else, but I will request that the board trustees not move forward with the fireworks proposal on the agenda tonight for some reason. The first is, I guess, a question, and that is, why would the board trustees spend over $13,000 on a fireworks contract, which appears to be between two private companies, that's not even with the township, it's with Mr. Saccatino and the Hamburg Fireworks Display? Second, both ethical and legal questions remain unanswered about last year's fireworks event. Those are still unresolved, and yet it appears from the proposal on the agenda that we're going down that same path and that same format. Third, it is suggested the township paid for the fireworks with JZ funds. This is the same false narrative that was used to pay residents trash trails prior to the November election last year in an effort to gain votes for that board, the previous board on which you served, Mr. Johnson. And the reason I bring up the JZ funds is, it's suggested in the agenda that we have these unlimited funds, and I'd like to remind the board, and I- these unlimited funds, and I'd like to remind the board, and I think Mr. Evans made a good point. Some of those funds are now in question, and that the one warehouse may not be going forward. The township is committed to several multi-million road projects, and we have further infrastructure projects on the horizon. We don't even know if we're going to have enough JZ funds to pay for those projects. I think JZ money should be used for public safety and infrastructure, which would include the security cameras which were suggested here tonight. So I think that's the more appropriate use of those JZ funds. Fourth, the sponsor of the fireworks, Mr. Sabatino currently has active development projects within the township. The structuring of this event, like last year, gives the appearance of a quid pro quo relationship which should be avoided. Even if that's not the case, this board should avoid any appearance of a quid pro quo relationship. And I think there are a lot of deals, are a lot of details relative to last year's event that suggest that there was a quid pro quo relationship. And fifth, in my opinion, Etna residents would best be served if the trustees would spend their time working on the unresolved development problems in the community like the Skanel, which was referred to here tonight, and which continues to be an ongoing discussion with little resolve, instead of asking, instead of taking time to ask corporations for sponsorships.
Ashley King, 75 Trail East. I first wanted to thank Mr. McKee and Mr. Vance for meeting with me and answering some of the questions I have. I was really happy with the car that you had already made on and stuff, so I was very impressed. I want to thank you. Laura, thank you for your quick response on the exact email. I did not expect you to answer that at all. I was like, she won't answer it tonight. It'll be like Tuesday, Thursday.
You got blood.
I appreciate it. So I just had a couple of quick things I wanted to talk about. First, asking for twelve items to be amended onto the agenda, I get what you're trying to do. I understand, but it's excessive. Nobody wants to be here till eleven o'clock. I think, I think, I don't think anybody wants to be here till eleven o'clock. So I think if you take the top two or three things that you really are looking for, you'll get one more thing on that. Don't shake your head. You haven't tried. Every time I see you in here, there's
I have.
Ten, twelve, thirteen. I mean, there's a lot of requests.
And they don't add one?
They do have some of them on here. This is today, the ones that you requested in the past. So they are. Personally, for me, with the fireworks, last year I moved here, everybody's very aware of that, I'm sure, because I talked to her about how I haven't been here that long. But that was one of the reasons that when we moved here, we were there, we went to the fireworks, we had our little boy who wasn't even two yet. We took him and he got to play for free on the bounce houses and do all kinds of fun stuff. And personally, that showed a huge sense of community to me. I think that if it was more, you know, hand to hand, like, you know, you guys sent it out, showed people that you guys are doing it, I absolutely think it's a great thing to do. I just think it needs to make sure that people are aware that it is happening this year. I didn't see anything about it online last year, so I do think that that was part of the issue. But personally, I think it was great. I loved it. We had a very wonderful time. And we got to meet a lot of people on this township, but we probably wouldn't have met otherwise. So I saw that, you know, there was a lot of protests. And personally, I do also think that food trucks would be really cool on Fridays. But also, I reached out to Laura just to see if it was possible that we could take the park and then just have the food trucks ourselves. I guess during COVID, it was stopped due to the regulations that they have come out during that time. So maybe if we just looked at lifting that, so that the community as a whole could just do their own food truck event, even if we wanted to. I don't mind doing it. I'll call a couple of food trucks and see if they don't mind coming.
Then you got that backwards. During COVID, John, they lifted it. It can't be unresidential. I suggested you talk to John about
Oh, okay.
And I've spoken, Mr. Singles, about it. It is doable. We just have to act on it.
Okay, well, I don't think it's a very pertinent issue personally. I think that it's miniscule. I mean, if we're talking about having a community day with fireworks, I think that's great. So the food truck, even if it does happen this year, I mean, we're already in, what, July, so I don't know. I don't see it as a big issue. I just think it would be cool to do personally. We were talking about Tequila Tuesdays. Maybe that'll be another. But, you know, and I also know that I talked to Mr. McKee and Mr. Vance about social media for the township, and that's something that they were looking into. I do think that's a very big job for an administrator to do that's here only a couple days a week. Like, that's a lot of work to put on somebody because it is a lot of upkeep and you really have to pay attention to it. So I would have been having, you know, additional people looking at it and that sort of thing. I wouldn't have put on any one person. And then, you know, I just would really like to see, you know, some movement. I'm really happy with the agenda. I talked to Mr. McKee about a lot of these, and I'm very happy to see them on here. So, thank you, guys.
So, my name is Bill Bubman, 133 Butler Place. I remember I have a question. I just have a comment. This is my first board meeting, and it is very, very sad to see how dysfunctional this board is. This is my first one, and it's terrible. It's actually terrible. And being here, I think I know what the dysfunction is. So you guys get together. You're here for us, not for your individual agenda. You're here for us. Get together, all right? Stop arguing. Stop fighting. If you guys have an issue with each other, take it outside. Take it into a meeting. Don't do this crap in front of the community. It's just, it's not healthy, okay? It's just not healthy. So, that's all I got today.
Thank you.
Just to answer one question, then, we can't take it anywhere outside these meetings to discuss township business. It's actually illegal. So we do have to have conversations in public. It's required. And we should be able to discuss anything. And just like Ms. King brought up social media, that apparently Mr. McKee is working on, that's been something I've asked for agenda forever, so why don't we discuss it as a board instead of just pushing it through at what you want instead of having it collaborative? That's all I'm saying. We're still together.
This is what I'm talking about. This is the dysfunction. We're going to discuss it.
Mr. Vance, any more public comments before we move on?
I do have one question. Am I going to be allowed to speak during trustee comments? Because if not, I'll speak during
Are there any more public comments?
Okay, yes, I'm speaking as a resident.
Ms. Varian, do you have
Speaking as a resident, please.
Laura?
I'm speaking as a resident.
This is
Mark Evans.
Not for you to do.
I'm on Old North Church Road, Edna, Ohio. Resident here. Last meeting during trustee comments, approximately five seconds in, Mr. Johnson motioned to adjourn the meeting, and Ms. McKee quickly seconded that and shut the meeting down.
Mr. Evans, I would ask you to please have a seat.
This is my three minutes of public comments. You're going to, this is my freedom of speech.
Mr. Evans, I'm asking you to please have a seat.
I have three minutes.
I'm asking you nicely.
I have three minutes. So again, if this board is going to continue to silence a trustee, again, five seconds in to adjourn and not allow a trustee to speak is inappropriate. And simply asking, is that going to continue again without an answer, show me that that was going to happen again. So that forces me to speak as a resident, and you cannot stop me as a resident. Now, Ms. McKee attempted to stop me from recording these meetings. It's, it's, it's got to stop. We have to work together as a board. So please, I intend to speak as a trustee at the end, and I hope I don't get cut off again. But this needs to end. As far as, like I said, Josh had mentioned, getting the non-chains coming in, this township can offer economic incentives to bring that in. We don't have to just give it to warehouses. That's what we should use to craft what we want. We have to put some thought process in this, just like Pike Street. There's no thought process in it. It went from one design to all of a sudden ten-foot sidewalks just because there's federal funding, just because it can doesn't mean it should. We need to have community input, just like the aggregation, just the more information we have, the more input from the community.
I ask you, sit three minutes, two three minutes, Mr. Evans. Please have a seat.
I don't want you to
Yes, it's been three minutes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Varian, do you have anything for the fiscal report?
I don't have anything really. I presented the trustees with the first half of the year's financials, and we received the second tranche of the ARBA funds for $25,000 last week.
I move the resolution 2207-19 along to approve the purchase order as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I see there's a purchase order for fireworks. Is that predetermined? Is that why it's on there that we're going to move forward with it before vote?
Discussion?
Roll call? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to pay the bills as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
On the mileage reimbursement for zoning, Mr. Johnson, you're in charge of that. Should we be including what properties' addresses of that are included in that, say, just the starting and stopping mileage?
You can have that added in there.
I'm just saying, just typically, in any kind of reimbursement, you're saying why, why and where, just a little bit more information of maybe property address and that.
I can get him to do that.
That'd be a perfect view.
Is that right, John? What address was coming down together?
Right. And then, an easy way to verify mileage, it's just proper controls.
Yep, yep.
No problem.
That's true.
Roll call?
Can I speak first?
Sure.
If that, they might not know, they might not be able to do it on that one, but they can do it in the future.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They might not know where it is.
It's not a big deal, and I trust that, but it's just heaven's proper
I don't think having it in the future would be a problem. You'll have a spreadsheet up on it. You can fill in like one of the forms.
It's not too much, just an address of property and that.
Roll call? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Vance, the manager consultant. Report, please.
Yep, thanks, Madam President. Just a few things. The Skanel FedEx update. Management consultant and zoning officer making very positive progress with the improvements of FedEx commercial site impacts, which includes stormwater lighting improvements and increasing the height of the sound wall between FedEx and the adjacent residential neighborhood properties. We got a great email from FedEx or from Skanel earlier in July, and we're going to meet again early August and discuss the next steps. Storage One, management consultant and zoning officer, also making very positive progress with the improvement in the Storage One commercial lighting locations located to the adjacent residential properties. Once again, to the east of Storage One, commercial lights all adjusted to point straight downward at this point in time. Stormwater basins are also cleaned up. The tree buffer, which is approved with the development, I guess, five or six years ago, has yet to be installed, so that's an issue that we are following up on to get specifics and confirmation of when those activities will take place. Tollgate stormwater flooding issues, management consultant and assistance zoning officer in this case, making positive progress with the identification of Tollgate flooding issues. Township stormwater lines, farm field stormwater tiles, and lack of development-related stormwater improvements, making flooding of this low-line area more significant and potentially necessary. And the township will continue work on the property owner, and I'll have another update at the August second meeting. And as far as the Main Street, Ohio 40, glaring light issues, the management consultant and zoning officer received confirmation this week that a commercial lighting situation on 40, once again, the apartment complex, associated with a private apartment building set for improvement, is set for improvement this week. The security lighting on the building is expected to be lowered, and then we'll go from there.
Is that the motel?
And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Is that the motel property you're talking about next to Blue Monkey? Yes. And then, what about the Blue Monkey? Because those lights are also causing some light trespass and glaring out of the room.
President McKee, that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you.
I was addressing you, Mr. Vance, not Ms. McKee. Where are we at with the Blue Monkey? Like I said, that was a concern. I went out there with light meters. Is that being addressed, just like the resident in Camp Mar is concerned about overall light pollution, which I have been since a resident here, bringing the concerns of the prior board? So is that being addressed at the Blue Monkey also?
Okay, we are not familiar with any lighting issues associated with the Blue Monkey. We have got no phone calls from adjacent property owners.
We talked about it at the last meeting. You said you worked in enforcement.
President McKee, that's all I got to report tonight.
Thank you.
Let's move on to new business. Etna Township generates significant revenues annually with the JZ Development Agreement, and it's being proposed for consideration by the Etna Township Board of Trustees that such resources are utilized to cover the thirteen thousand, twenty, fifty dollar costs associated with the September 4th, 2022 Etna Community, Annual Community Firework Show. That means that annually, this is not the ones that we had in the past two years. This is a community. That means everybody in the township or whoever else decides to want to come to the fireworks. I will be reaching out to corporations to possibly sponsor some of the community day events to sponsor the communities. One of them that I have reached out to and they're willing to work with us is Ashley Furniture. So just so we can at least let you guys know, we're planning on reaching out to Amazon, FedEx, Kohl's, and whoever else that we can work out as far as the corporations are concerned here in Etna. I move to authorize the thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to the Hamburg Fireworks Display, Inc., for the 2022 fireworks display for September 4th, 2022, and to cut a deposit check of five thousand dollars. Now, with the remaining balance due in ten days prior to the display date, and to authorize the property owner, Rob Sabatino, to sign the, just a different contract that's saying that we're going to use his property, nothing to do with the fireworks contract. We as a township has to sign it ourselves. Is there a second to have that done?
A second? Do you have a question? No?
Yes, sir.
So they're going to light off on Mr. Sabatino's property?
Right, so they're going to have to do a contract to say
I haven't, I would haven't been here for fireworks. I would probably be here this year either, so I don't know how it works. Because my understanding is that a lot of people watch it from their backyards and watch it everywhere else, so it'll be this similar to what's been done in the past couple of years, correct?
Yes, no changes, and that's why we thought that having it at his property would be the ideal place to have it, because everything's already been laid out how they've done it in the past two years. The difference this year is a community event. So what I would propose is we get our Boy Scouts involved, have a pancake right this in the morning here, out front here, and have some other things on it. The park started early, it's eight o'clock in the morning. Get our school bands involved to do some of the music, just to make it a community, an annual community day. In the future, I would see it going over to our park that we should have in the next few years. So he's, Mr. Sabatino is just allowing us to use his property. We don't have a park here that we can do those big fireworks shows. We don't have a park here that we can do those big fireworks shows.
So I have a question. The cost I saw forwarded before was twice this amount.
Excuse me?
The cost that I was forwarded was twice this amount for band, for play equipment, for security, for all that.
We are not responsible for that, Mr. Evans. We're just paying for the fireworks show.
So the sponsors are covering the other costs?
I don't know. If they're covering the other costs, I just know that we're.
Well, what are the sponsors' sponsors?
Well, we're going to reach out to our sponsors and ask them if they would help us to cover the fireworks.
So reduce our costs.
So reduce our costs. So that's what I'm going to reach out to ask for help from them to try to help us pay with the fireworks.
Okay. Now, the second thing is, the past two fireworks were hosted by Etna Township Resources, were used. It was never board action, correct, Mr. Johnson?
Well, this is different.
It was never, and those fireworks are actually still under investigation by the fraud investigators of the Special Investigative Unit of the Auditor's Department. Now, nope, and you're proposing to do the fireworks at the same location where VIP tables were given away to politicians and their friends, free food, all that. I think it's highly improper to have a developer that, again, is under investigation for a private agreement between Mr. Carlisle himself to plow undedicated roads using township resources.
I will be very careful with what you're saying, because.
No, no, no.
We have nothing to do.
It's an ongoing investigation.
Okay, that's what you said. We have nothing to do with that.
Marissa Gibson, she is a fraud investigator.
Okay, I understand.
And my concern is, we are benefiting this business. Are they selling tables like they did before?
That's, I want to make sure that I be clear here tonight. These are not private tables. We're not doing VIP. This is a community event. That means bring your blankets, bring your lawn chairs, watch the fireworks. That's it. There's no VIP, there's no tables, there's no special seating or political things or politician, none of that's involved. This is a community event, being held at the golf course until we can now, by next year or year after, maybe, our park is available and we can move on to the park.
So I look far worse than everybody else. Let's wait until next year and not follow the past process, improper process of this. Our insurer, under the risk assessment, flipped when they realized we were involved with it is. You see emails, and again, there's nothing, it's just wrong. And again, to do it with the developer that is hosted, that is under investigation, it's just wrong.
You guys, which is one of the ways.
And you're saying we have all this Jets money, we just lost the development that's going to pay for that 3.5 million with a $400,000 to $500,000 lump sum on the Refugee Road project. You're talking about Pike Street, this 8.1.
Wait, wait, let's be clear on that.
President McKee, that's not the case. I would say we move on.
No, I'm still, Mr. Vance, I'm still discussing.
Let's be clear on that.
And we're talking about.
The Refugee Road project, so let's be clear.
And we're talking about an $8.1 million project that will be responsible for 1.75 to maybe 2. It's not endless money, and the majority of our jet Z funds come from Amazon, which is a 13-year lease or about halfway through it. That can end. We have a lot of expenses, a lot of road upkeep. The roads within the corporate park are culpable to the shock of many that applied for the administrative position that should be private. So there's a fraud investigation going on underneath.
What's the case number?
Other projects. Do you want to give you?
Right now.
And you're out of order. You're out of order. I'll provide that information. They're very much aware of it.
No, we're not.
But you are.
No, that's not true. There is no case number, Mr. Evans. Do not say that. The state of Ohio does not provide a case number.
Marissa?
That's why we know that.
Marissa Gibson, fraud investigator, honor of the state, Keith Faber. You have her email. You have the information.
That's okay, that's fine. Of course, I worked for the state for many years. Yes, we have that information.
And you want to partner with the same individual?
Excuse me, Mr. Evans, there is no case number, so let's not go down that path. That's not true.
I can show you email after email.
Mr. Evans, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
The only thing I would recommend that you modify that motion is taking on your board who's going to sign the new contract that you were to make some connection.
Oh, yeah, well.
We didn't specify. You got to have it where one of you has the authority to sign it.
Okay, so we need to add on to my motion sheet to add the trustee to sign off on this?
I don't know how you'd be.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Sabatino, signing that, that you're going to, it's going to be one with the property owner. You need to put whose point, you need, in your motion, you need to have who on our board has the authority to sign it.
Right, you simply probably present on a board that would sign off on the contract.
So I just modify your motion.
Yeah, so I'll just.
As long as I'm just.
Add that.
Whoever's second is okay with modifying the motion.
And to be clear, all the sponsors are going to reduce our $13,000 cost, correct?
We're in the process of asking, it's a ask, not saying that it's a guarantee. We're asking.
Not going towards the developer's cost, the property owner's cost, correct? Band, security?
No, this is strictly for the fireworks.
So we're going to have fireworks, and we're not paying for security?
We're not, that's, we're not paying for anything on that as far as that security side. I mean, we're just paying for the fireworks.
I have a question about that. When people come to watch the fireworks that don't live in that area, where do they usually, where can they see them? Is there a particular place?
Yeah, they, well.
Or they stay on sidewalk?
People pull in, there's parking there at the golf course, there's parking in the community. People can see, from what I know, people can see us as far as spoken, Watkins.
Mr. President, I think we're getting that because he hasn't been there neither have I, but I've been told they sit on the golf course. Ron at the golf course, they can sit on the golf course.
Also, you allow them to come and sit?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You can bring your blankets and have a seat.
So I live on the golf course. I live on the green tee, right behind that pond. Where the pond is, they set the fireworks off right there. They put a big plastic fence out so nobody can get in there, so it's safe. But then up by the driving rings, they open all, the entire driving ring is opened up. People sit up there, they sit apart in that. They sit alongside the number 10 fairway. So it's open.
That's why I'm trying to make sure that we have, people just don't live on there or just right there. The one wasn't there from other people. I want to make sure of that, because I have not been here either.
And in the past, they sold VIP tables. You're saying that's not going to be done?
You're not going to do that. That's not, this is a community event, so a community means anybody. Like, we go to Reynolds Park fireworks, we go to Gehanna, we go to Pickerington, so it's the same thing.
Potashqua is not paid by Potashqua. It's all sponsored. Last two years was all sponsored.
Okay.
Why don't we do that? Why are we expending our funds?
So again, like I said, we'll, we'll, we'll reach out to corporations to try to get sponsors.
I personally think that the last couple of years, it's a good thing they had enough fireworks. It's on a day when no one else has fireworks around, confirming business identity, and our major plan is to move it over to the park in a couple of years. Why start, why put it into something that we've already have started and gotten to rolling, and people start to know about, like obviously didn't know about it, well, more people know about it now. So I think it's a good move to continue on.
You're talking like we did that. The board didn't have any formal action. It was one person, John Carlisle, and the money went to John Carlisle's house. The funds, the station went to.
But how do you know that?
President McKee, it's, yes.
It was directed to that.
Move on.
Here's. No, it's not here. It's documents.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, wait, you got to make your.
Oh, I'm sorry. I made a motion to specify that I am adding myself as a president to sign off on the contract with Hamburg Fireworks Display, Inc.
And then who's going to handle the contract?
Well, I will be handling the contract with Rob Sabatino, the president of the board. Will be handling the contract with Rob Sabatino. We both will go ask you.
So do you want to restate your motion just to make it easier for the minutes, please?
I move to authorize $13,250 to Hamburg Display, Inc., for 2022 fireworks display on September 4th, and to cut a check for $5,000 with the remaining balance due in 10 days prior to display date, and authorize property, authorize a fireworks contract with Hamburg Fire Display that I will sign the contract, and also an additional contract with Rob Sabatino stating that we will be using his property to display the fireworks. Is there a second?
A second.
And for the record, we're just going to roll. We have only seven minutes.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Roll call?
So are we going to have discussion, and again, my objection's going to be included in this?
So roll call?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. All business under Rogue Paving, 2022, Etna Township, 22th Street Paving, just for the county engineers estimate. Mr. Evans, you wanted to.
Yes, and hopefully we can move this forward, this meeting. Again, I'm presenting the township request for engineering assistance. This is required to get an engineering estimate and aim to put bid forms. This is very late in the season. I'm hoping we can still do something. The board's delayed this quite a bit, so hopefully, again, we can have something done this year. I provided some information, again, through the pavement management group. All the roads were analyzed, and as you can see up here, there's a dashboard which analyzed all roads. And right there, you see where Etna Proper is. That's kind of the worst section. As I brought up before, there was an OPWC grant that was not submitted last year that was going to cover the eastern portion of Etna Proper, excluding Pike Street. Now, because of that, I mean, that could have paid for 75% grant, which was a little over $200,000 for the cost. If we move forward this year, we're paying fully out of pocket. So we've got to decide are we going to move forward and pay for it out of pocket, or possibly submit OPWC grant for this repaving and put it off to next year. The roads are deteriorating quite a bit. Red is the second worst, and this is really needed. So as you can see on the spreadsheet I provided, let me see here, maybe some people can.
The only section in red?
No, there's other sections in red, and let me see if I can pull this up here. It's kind of hard to see, but I mean, but I'm proposing Etna Crest Boulevard, that is also a very poor section there. Etna Proper East, excluding Pike Street. Etna Proper West, those roads are about the same condition. Those were not part of the OPWC grant previously. And on that spreadsheet, I was proposing a one-and-a-half to two-inch mill with overlay with some partial or full-depth repairs. I've got on there the approximate area based on the consultant, and that's what the engineer's estimate will confirm or correct. I've got approximate costs, and going through, so those are Etna Proper East and West. The Etna Crest Boulevard would be the full mill and replacement. Now, Pike Street East, on the west side, there was a one-inch overlay to temporarily hold us over. If we're moving forward with the reconstruction, which will be in three to five years, we don't want to do a full overlay. We don't want to expend all those funds. So 1.5-inch overlay would be approximately $89,000. That's similar to the estimate Bubba had gotten. Now, there's a Cape Seal, which is chip and seal, but with a micro-surfacing, which could be cheaper. We might be able to save about $20,000 on it if it's just kind of a Band-Aid to get us through until the full reconstruction. So I'm asking for both those estimates from the engineer. And then part of the program is, before, we were just waiting for the roads to deteriorate to the point of replacement. And that's a very inefficient and costly way to maintain our roads. Through the pavement management group and analysis thereafter, there's several factors that were recommended, and one is a rejuvenator application for kind of the higher-ranked roads. Typically, you do that one to two years after the pavement has been installed. It's approximately 11 cents per square foot, and it actually extends the life of the road quite a bit. There's several test areas, and Bub and I are meeting one company tomorrow, Pickerington, or by the township, I think it is actually, where they treated one side of the road and did treat the other. And in my research, I've seen a lot of locations like that, and it can extend the use of the roads. Instead of just letting the road deteriorate on a downward slope, you do minor, I guess, preservation to bring it back up, and it'll extend the road life, and it's also a lot less costly. So what I propose is Orchard Glen, Pepper Tree, Lynn's Road, Columbia Road are all good candidates. Also Longwood, Laurel, and Brandy Mill, Columbus Parkway, that small section, and then Mayflower. Now, the additional costs there, it'd be about 24% preservation and about 76% of replacement. And the total cost of the estimate, now these are going up, so it'd probably be a little bit higher, if they can even do it this year, would be about $562,000, well below our $1 million budget. And going forward, there are other options for preservation and extending road life. Again, instead of just crack ceiling and waiting until we have to add caps to it or mill and put overlays. And so that is what I am proposing, whether they can do it or not. Right now, we're likely looking at October, November paving. I'm not sure about the availability of the rejuvenators, such as like Reclomite, and they do have temperature constraints. But typically, you don't want to really do October, November paving. You really want to wait till spring, but again, do we want to? We can wait till spring and maybe apply for the OPWC, or the OPWC grant, we could go for this year. We could possibly go on Refugee Road portions and maybe Palmer and a couple other areas. I talked to Rob Plant, who's the liaison for District 17 of the OPWC, and he said that preservation treatments, even like chip and seal, are not covered under that grant, so it's just replacement. So we'll be taking care of most of the really bad roads here, again, out of pocket. If we would apply for that grant, could have been $200,000 to us. So I just want to see what, if there's any questions or whatnot on the proposal or on the dashboard that I showed before. And as far as the whole system, the dashboard and that, that will actually be, we can incorporate that into our website, and residents could pull up. One of the great things about this is, as I was going through it, you can select any road. And it'll actually pull up a video of the road, and you can see the condition. So a road department can use it, or anybody, somebody has a complaint at a certain address, you can type that address in. It'll pull up the road in front of their house. But as you can see, this was rated.
What road is this?
That's Columbus Road, Etna Proper West, going towards 310 there. But that's with the spreadsheet I gave you. It's got all the information, the ratings system, but I think the one thing that we need to do, and it'll be very. But I think the one thing that we need to do and it'll be very efficient use and best use of our funds is preserving our roads. And what I'd like to do is we could do a workshop. They can come in, PMG can come in, we can talk to the board, talk to the residents, do a whole presentation, or I can just do it on my own for anybody who's interested, but go with the whole system. It's great to actually have some quantitative information to make these decisions and just, ah, it's been a few years, let's replace it, let's do this, let's do that. And there's other things you can do like the micro-surfacing, Cape Seal. The one thing everybody hates is chip and seal. I'm not proposing that anywhere. It's just a rough surface and nobody likes that. So, but going forward, I think we can have a great plan, save a lot of money on our roads and also maintain a high level of road quality throughout the township for our residents.
What's the rating on that one?
The rating on Columbia Road depends on what's, wait, no, Columbus Road. Some are 43, poor. Once you get into the 50s and below, it's time to, you want to mill and replace. Once you, there's different levels and I plan on putting it online or it kind of gives you an idea of, once you get to a certain level, these are what you can do to extend it. Otherwise, you're just wasting your money or, but the rejuvenator is the most cost-effective at 11 cents per square foot that you can really extend the roads. You'll see one side without all the cracking and the other side they've had, had to seal crack. And that's the one thing that really deteriorates the road is water, but also what the rejuvenator does is there's two different substances in there, maltese, that are degraded by UV and the heat, as soon as the asphalt leaves, the plant is degrading. The maltese are soluble, so that's what's going, that's what leaves and that's what this rejuvenator called Reclamite replaces. And like I said, it'll give the road a lot more elasticity. It just makes it last quite a bit longer and a very cost-effective method. So this request for the engineering is not a request or we're not approving that yes, we're moving forward with this. All it is, is the county engineer getting their estimates together so that, and the bid documents so that we can put it out for bid. And again, it may be too late for this season because of the prior delays, but I'm trying. I would have liked to have this out two weeks ago, but here we are. I hope nobody understands. So I make a motion to, and you have the copy of the document here, a motion to approve the township request for engineering assistance dated 7/19/22, which references the attached road list. And we could have probably done more to preserve the roads, but again, we're kind of towards the end of the season.
Mark, can you please just make it as a motion? If that's hard to do at the moment, something you can do that, please.
All right, well, I'll move to approve the township request for engineering assistance with the attached road list. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I have a lot of questions about this road list.
Okay.
And so the first page of it would be basically Etna proper.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
Alley's on here.
Who?
Alley's.
The alleys, yes.
Yeah, the alleys have been repaved. I remember one of them today and they're in great shape. So I don't know why we're repaving those. The roads, streets, yes, I would agree with you, those need paving.
I mean, the alley east of Mechanic Street, and I can pull it up, is 49.
There were weeds on some of them, but that's...
One of them has been recently repaved. I think that's going to a parking lot that we owned and that's excluded from here.
I drove almost all of them this afternoon. You're correct, there are weeds coming out there, but that's because nobody's ever on that road. And it's an alley, it's not an alley.
Well, and that's the thing, we can decide not to do it, but this is getting the information and then once we get the information, we decide what the bid package is going to be. And this is get more information than you need and then you can reduce it. If we don't get the estimates on the alleys and then decide, yeah, we want the alleys, well now it's too late. So get the information on the alleys. This isn't approving anything.
Right.
But...
Basically do a lot of work, but then we're not going to approve, but that's my, I send an extra work. My notice is not working. Everybody's busy these days. And this, the other thing I have on here, Mark, real quick, this rejuvenator application is not part of it, correct? Or the copy?
This sheet's not part of it? No, both sheets are. The first sheet covers all the actual asphalt overlay.
Right.
The second sheet is the rejuvenators.
Yeah. I'm for paving these like you're saying here, except for the alleys.
Okay, this is an alley. This is fine?
The challenge is that one's going, which one is it? That's the street.
That is between Liberty Street and Canal.
That's an alley or is this a street?
That's an, that's an alley. Here's Mechanic.
Mechanic's not an alley, it's a street.
Or, wait, no, but I think this is, is this the alley between? Wait, I don't know. Here's...
It says he owns a report.
Okay, so here's another alley.
Yes, that's an alley.
Yeah, as far as the alley goes, that's a little cracks going on.
I mean, that, I mean, it's getting to the point...
A lot of myself cracks growing up in them. A lot of myself cracks moving on top of them, yes. Look up something like that. It's like nobody drives down that road.
Right. And then there's others. Like I said, there are ones and others. If we want to do piecemeal and then in a couple of years, do it again or it's...
I don't know. That's alley of Liberty Street.
I believe the alleys were included in the OPWC grant, no?
That, but what they're showing is alleys, not alleys. That's the end of Liberty Street that goes down here. It's the street, it's not an alley.
No, but...
Off the top of my head, Dunlap would be an alley.
Between Canal and East, that's an alley, right there, right?
Is that what it says, alley? That looks like one, yes. That should be one, Mark.
Alley of Canal Street.
Okay.
I mean, you've got all the, this is falling apart here and like I said, it's rated, it's, and we can have that discussion if you want to use these tools or look more, but the more information you get, we can always reduce from the bid list, but you can't add on to it easily afterwards because you're not going to have the precise, I mean, they have the figures of what roads, the widths are and that here.
That's why we're going to spend to pave a back alley that nobody with the tri's people may be used.
But here's alley of, most of the top ones are alleys. So you've got some good, poor, fair, one's a 37, which is falling apart, a couple...
Alley of Columbus Street. Yeah, is that what it says, Columbus Street?
I don't think they have alleys, correct, as alleys. I think some of your, your, your streets.
No, it's, it's alleys between, they say alley of, east of Canal, alley of...
The one picture of east, the alley of Liberty was Liberty Street, wasn't an alley.
Well, I did pull the one that wasn't. Some of where alleys April Road. I recognize some of those. Now, they look different now, though.
All right, so this was just done in June. I think it's June, I don't know when they called it.
Has the road crew cracked seal it is?
There's, they're crack sealing quite a bit. There's been some that, like Heritage Drive hasn't been crack sealed ever, so we're getting to, we need to crack seal as much as we can, but like I said, that's where the preservation comes in of stopping that and most likely the joint, the centerline joint will probably eventually have to be sealed sooner. But again, we can have that conversation. You don't want to pave the alley or, and that's where the question with Jared Nurr is. He's going to give us engineering estimates and I'm going to talk to Jared of, okay, this is what the pavement management consultant recommends. Here's his information. What do you think, Jared, based on the history of it? Because we're just building the system. What they can do is, and what eventually I'm going to do is, each of these roads go through the history and state what kind of basis on it. When was the last time it was done? Is it a two inch cap on it or is it an inch and a half so that we'll know? Like a lot of these estimates, we don't know if we got to mill an inch and a half or two inches, but Jared will know and we'll build that information out.
And, and that way it's really bad to go way east. I mean, Pike Street is definitely so.
Well, Pike Street, yeah.
And that red section is bad.
Like we're going to do a, but that's going to be temporary. We don't want to...
Right. No, no, I agree.
Now the Pike Street going west, no, and South Street going west, that's fine. That's not being touched. And then the neighborhoods are done. There's a couple, Heritage Drive, like I said, it's getting to a point needs something. There's a couple of the roads, but like I said, with this system, you can click and you can pretty much drive down there and out towards where you live. Summit Road going up to it does need some attention and like I said, I didn't include all that because I don't think, no, any company's not going to get to it if we're doing this mid-July. And now again, we've got to wait. I don't know Jared Nurr, how long he's going to be. That's why I tried to bring this up two weeks ago. So again, unless you want to add others on to it, I would request, as I did in motion, send this to Jared. I can discuss it with him. He can't move forward unless two have signed.
Well, and like I said, I have no problem with paving up the streets in Etna proper area. I do have reservations about rejuvenator. I mean, that's easy for him to just give you a number on. We have used that before and we didn't see the results from it.
You've used, you've used it before?
Had or passed. Now that they have some new rejuvenator, that one is different.
Rejuvenex, I believe. There's various, various ones, Reclamite.
Reclamite was another one we tried.
On what roads and what?
I don't remember. It was...
It's on that history spreadsheet. It shows when we did that.
Yeah. It was done a while back.
Like I said, I've seen, we're talking to companies tomorrow and Violet Township, they did half the road and then not the other half and it's clear as day and everything I'm finding, it's as clear as day and it saves the maintenance or the replacement costs of them because we're getting more and more roads, these neighborhoods, we're taking these on and that's going to be an ongoing expense and that's where a lot of these jet Z's and jet monies is supposed to be going towards, especially like the corporate park and that. It's a lot of expense and asphalt's just getting more expensive as we go, so unless, do you have any other questions or Ms. McKee, do you have questions about this?
Well, there's trouble today. We have a lot to hear from him.
And again, this is just getting...
Right, you're just going to get it presented to the county.
We can make a final decision, but whatever we do, we shouldn't dilly-dally on it because if, then nothing's going to happen this year.
So we're going to present it to the county and it can take a couple of months for them to get to us, is that...
Oh, a couple of months? No.
No, a couple of weeks, I should say.
But then, but then we'll also have to, the OPWC, need to start working on that. And am I going to be handling that? Am I going to be, or is this board going to move forward on the OPWC grant for this year on this? For, we have to apply for it this year for next year. Like I said, the board last year voted November 2nd and then Mr. Carlisle said, no, don't apply for it. That costs us possibly 200,000. I mean, do you have roads you want to add? Because we can always take them out, but we can't add them afterwards.
No, I'm, I'm at your trust in that you're, you've done a good assessment of this.
Well, I just reported that you had sent it two weeks ago.
How many road miles is this actually, does it say?
I don't have road miles. I have square footage. Total paving area is 284,000 square feet at approximate cost of 429,000. Now the OPWC grant application, when Jared did that estimate, I think that total cost was, I think, 280, 300, somewhere around there? And that's where I believe it contained the alleys. I'll have to double check on that. I just think a lot of times there's, there's value in adding more to an area than letting it go and having the contractor have it coming out, just do a small alley here, a small alley there. And then as far as preservation goes, the total area that I recommend being preserved is 1.2 million, which is about 18% of the total township pavement area. And if we, if we could keep that in good condition, it'll save us enormously in the long run. And if you have any information as far as photos or studies when you previously tried some of those procedures, I didn't see any or...
I don't know.
And like I said, there was no transition, so there was no...
It was, it was done a while ago. I mean, when I first came in, the first couple of years, we tried this thing, so about 12 years, maybe 12 years ago. Yeah. 11 years ago, so we tried.
The user listed on that history, if you get that history spreadsheet, it shows when we did that.
So the result wasn't good on it as far as wording out. This was a, as far as rejuvenex or rejuvenation stuff that they have, that's what I'm saying.
Well, no, rejuvenex is different and based on, like I said, I think it's a Minnesota study that kind of ranked it and I think rejuvenex was in a lower class group because there's different chemical compositions and some will add more asphaltines, some are, it, I mean, it's very complex. So I'm basing it on my due diligence and all the reports and everything and I can bore this up to it. And based on the pavement management group and like I said, the center just going around of, I think this, I think that.
OPWC did not have the alleys.
It did.
It just had East Street, Columbus Street, Canal Street, Liberty and South in line. It was only on this side.
That was, okay. Again, it would have been beneficial if that were then in there, saved us 200,000.
We have no guarantee of getting that.
Well, you're guaranteed not to if you don't apply for it. And there was no reason not to for it.
Well, I don't, I just don't want to send too much work over to the engineer because a lot of people have been so...
Well, if there's too much work for them, we can just say, I can't do it to the...
Well, I think we'd get it back faster if we had less on it.
And my discussion with them, I'll say, these are priorities and, I mean, it's, it's a process and I'm working through it, but I need approval to do this. It means two, two signatures. I've got one. I want you to just stand and stand and need to sign.
I'll give you a second to discuss it.
All right. Do we go call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
And then before you leave, I'll just need one of you to sign it too.
Okay, we're going to move over to the board session. Town hall security cameras update on, yeah, I'll turn it over to Mr. Vance.
Okay, President McKee, security cameras for town hall have been an item of interest for quite some time. I was able to get two proposals for your review and I met with two professional security camera consultants with companies and gave them the ability to put together a proposal to take care of the security camera needs for the interior and the exterior of the township hall. I did not give them specifics associated with locations, et cetera. I just asked them to put together a plan that would work essentially to provide security camera views for the entire interior minus the conference room in the back and the exterior of the township hall on all four... and the exterior of the township hall on all four corners to include a view of the gazebo as well. And that information has been put in, put in your packet. And I would await direction as to the next steps.
I had one observation on the second proposal here by State Security. There's, it's a $21.75 per camera cloud storage fee. It seems excessive. I think all we need is a system here that can store the information. Most everyone, you can still access live footage or even older footage. That ongoing expense, if you, if you have 19 cameras, that's, I think, $500 a month. Where if you just have the standard regular system like we do at the garage, it has a, you know, whatever terabyte, it was two terabytes, I increased it to six, which will hold approximately three months because of issue with the records retention schedule that we need to deal with still. But he, the other security operation systems, which is dealing with the garage security, I guess propose a four-terabyte system. I would say that getting a larger system, especially that many cameras, I think we had a two-terabyte with eight cameras and that was about 27, 30 days coverage. Hard drives are cheap. I got that six-terabyte for, I think, $150 bucks. And you wouldn't have the per month $500 charge. I think that's just wasteful. And you're talking about $6,000 a year for cloud storage of security footage. Why? If there's an incident, we should just come here, review it. Or there's remote access that you can do that also. So that would be my input on that. And I would say we've got one security system operator. We shouldn't do before, like we had one for the garage and one for here. We should have one, one vendor. So are you proposing if we go with State Security that they take over for the garage?
Nobody's proposing that. And President McKee, if I may?
Yes, sir.
What I'm proposing in regard to the two quotes that you have before you this evening is that staff get direction to work with security operation systems at a cost not to exceed $10,660. If you would like to expedite the installation of this infrastructure, if the board of trustees would like to take a more cautious step forward, we could get, once again, I would recommend, since we've got a history working with Rob Levins, to get Mr. Levins to come to the August 2nd meeting to answer any specific questions you may have, to finalize a quote. And then you could consider providing direction, move forward thereafter.
His is which one, Dan?
The $10,660.
Security operations system.
And the good news is you don't have to go with cloud storage. That's a option. So you can all that.
And who, who does the, the officer there now?
The garage is Rob Levins' security operating systems. But we do, the security system over there is deficient. The last contractor really didn't have, have the areas covered in that. I had previously gotten quotes, which you guys have seen. We spoke about it in executive session about that, moving forward. So I'm hoping that maybe we can tie that into and properly secure our garage location, which houses quite a bit of machinery and equipment. And I think we can protect that probably.
And so, I mean, to me, it looks like an overkill of this room. Of this room here, on cameras.
I think one in this corner, I think is overkill. I mean, if you have one in that corner out, one in that corner.
What's our goal here, I guess, is just, you wanna catch somebody?
Madam President, if I can? And the goal is to have complete coverage. So there are no spots within the interior that you could, you know, something could happen and you couldn't see it with the cameras. If you're gonna invest thousands of dollars in cameras, I would think, you know, as far as the proposal goes, that you can cover the entire area you're seeking to keep secure.
So it's not security as much as things missing and secure the people in the building is how it is?
I mean, if you spend $10,000 and it doesn't cover your entire building and God forbid somebody gets assaulted in a corner that's not covered, you know, you're not gonna be feeling good about not being successful as far as, you know, having the evidence that could be needed to assist that situation going forward.
But, and it depends on what cameras, because cameras that took the field of use, you could put a camera in that corner that could possibly cover the corner. And that's where, now you might have a blind spot there or that's where I think talking a lot. But that was one of my concerns before. We rent out this hall and give people just security codes access. And if something happens, somebody enters, there's no record, there's no documentation. I mean, it's just, you know, before that, that office was left open with all the records. You know, so having cameras is good. Now, would the cameras have, and this is a question for Rob Levins, audio on it? Because I am concerned there is a camera in the garage, Bubba's office, and it does not have audio. I would not want audio.
Why should it have audio on it?
It should not. I don't think, I think that'd be invasion of privacy. Employees would worry if somebody's listening. So possibly in here, I don't know. Even then, I don't think, but definitely not where employees are working, no audio.
No audio at all, I propose. I don't think you should have audio. I mean, you, you're opening yourself up to lawsuits. I mean, when you have audio, things, you know, not have that person, it's somebody in the room with the audio on there. That's why they don't ask you to put the audio part of the camera. It's just the camera.
A lot of cameras come with it and it can be easily just turned off. My home system, I could just, it's on and off. So that's what I'm saying, what cameras.
Same with my house. I said your house.
And that might be a question.
This is a public place. I said your house, it's different.
And that could be a question for Rob. But I think as a board, I think we agree no audio.
Yeah. I know our company, all the security guys are in, are in my office. I can ask for them today and tomorrow. And I'd like to show this to them tomorrow. They'll respect our knowledge, our position, the baby, our plus business, over, you know, six states.
No, no.
Our most buildings.
Mr. Vance, on the first proposal by Rob Levins, SOS Systems, I see kind of the camera angles and that's just of the exterior. Did he have one for the interior like State Security provided?
And Madam President and Trustee Evans, if there's any specific questions associated with Mr. Levins' quote, I would suggest we get him here on August 2nd to have him answer them.
Well, I didn't know if you knew, if you got these quotes.
I don't even want to attempt to provide any kind of advice or direction on these quotes because I don't want to interfere with the competitive process. But if you are comfortable with the lowest quote, I would suggest the next step, we're gonna get Mr. Levins.
Sounds like it.
But he does have a successful history working with the township. So I have no qualms going forward with Mr. Levins.
And are we tying this into, because I spoke to Laura before about the, and we got quotes on it for new panels that will allow remote access? Like if there's a community group that needs touch of all, Laura could just provide them an access from her phone. It is, has that been discussed or I don't see panels or anything like that?
This is strictly security cameras.
Okay. I think we should kind of talk about that too because there might be an efficiency and the more you does, the less it'll cost of them. If we're still looking at those upgraded panels and the other security systems.
I know in the past, as far as that goes, that's still part of it. I know in the past, I've had to come down here once and tell people in the door since the time I've done, letting the door people. Most of the people that are in here are using the hall their normal hours or they're Aids after hours. And those people are very familiar how to get in here. Laura, I don't know, have you had to come down here recently and let people in?
Yeah. Yeah, but Rob has talked to me in the past about upgrades and stuff because it's the same system we put in in 2009.
Yeah.
But I know due to, due to some of your vendor getting stuff, I think the last one he was in here, the stuff he had recommended before, it's not available anymore and now it's more pricier.
One of the things I know we did for ours is saw a pan that's on the door. So you can go to my anger desk, so if somebody tried to come in, you could lock the doors. We'd want someone to.
Well, like I said, I'd like to tie into the other security systems at the garage. And we've already got those quotes. Maybe written here on the 2nd and just discuss it as well.
Will you come in on there? Well, you'll come in, right? Rob will come in here?
I can ask him and if we want to, and this is just a suggestion, if we want to make some progress with the cameras, and I understand that this could be negotiated, you know, as a total, you know, scope of work with Mr. Levins going forward. But if we want to move these forward, I would treat these distinctly and let's, you know, seek to give him the direction he's gonna need on the 2nd if the board of trustees is comfortable doing so. Let's get the cameras going in and then, you know, expand our, you know, security interest, you know, upgrading what we have that was put in in 2009 or whatever.
Yeah. I want this one to get input from more people. But I do see that he has, security operations does have seven interior cameras on there currently. So, but I looked at coverage and what?
Two in this room?
Four in front of officer or one in back hall?
It'd be nice to get, maybe if you could show kind of coverages prior to me so we could kind of think about that in advance.
Well, there's a page in here that.
That's exterior only, though.
Yeah.
If you look at the other competitors, he provides pretty good.
Correct.
Coverage of that. So, I mean, you've already got the blueprints from it. Maybe Rob could just write over that.
Okay, so we'll, President McKee will make that an agenda item for a second and I'll get some kind of display for the interior. All right, we'll do it.
I would suggest put it towards the front of the agenda, sorry. Just to.
Yes, after public talks, so everybody doesn't.
Uh, move on to live streaming township trustee meetings.
Okay, the background, it has been proposed to livestream Edna Township trustee meetings and coordinate the necessary audio and visual upgrades in the Edna Township Hall meeting room to do so. Edna Township staff has initiated such efforts and welcomes any additional direction from the township board trustees. We met with Mr. Corey Young, a gentleman who's an audio, visual contractor and I think he has other IT talents as well, many other. And he has done some work with the township in the past. And we met with him informally to, you know, begin working on three distinct quotes associated with the live streaming, audio upgrades, video upgrades, and the actual technology it would take to livestream the meetings. And at this point in time, the only recommendation I have is once I get that information from him, I will pass it on to the, to the board of trustees and the fiscal officer as well as staff. Take a look at it, review it, and then provide us direction on how you would like to proceed thereafter.
Is this the same individual that provided a quote to the prior board? Or livestreamed?
I've been here 60 days.
Well, I've been here six months, but I've.
He's talking about when Corey came in during COVID, how did you quote?
Yeah, there was a quote provided, I believe by Corey to prior board for $25,000 to livestream, which I think that, that was high. I think he was talking about building server racks and maintaining all the video here, which you can do that for free on YouTube, which everybody, Reynoldsburg does. So I, I think definitely we need to look at other contractors or maybe direct him that, no, we don't need a server rack here for, for storing all the videos, you know, in perpetuity or whatever we're required to. Then find someone that is familiar with using YouTube, just like Reynoldsburg does. And they've got a great system of cameras. When you're speaking, it'll zoom to you and you can do it automatically by the microphone, whoever's talking or someone pushing a button. So I, I think Mr. Vance should at least get the last quote in there. And I'm surprised Corey didn't mention that previous quote if you were discussing with him, but.
The previous quote was done under criteria by the previous board. Corey came in and took Roslin and Bill Vance's information down and he's quoting in the way they request. It's not applesauce. Corey provided the quote that was asked of him by the previous board.
Right, but it's good to have the previous quote to compare and to see.
It's not gonna be the same. We're not asking him to do the same stuff.
And President McKee, my suggestion is, let's see what we get back from Corey. Let's bring him in, let's ask him some questions, let's verify what other entities are doing. I know we want to get the best, you know, price that we can, the best bang for the buck, but we're also looking for quality. We're also looking for things that are gonna last for some years to come. So we are moving forward. And the purpose of this item is to let everybody know with live streaming, we are moving forward.
Well, and one question, you were talking about, Mr. McKee and Mr. Vance, you met with Corey about what you want in the system and that. Shouldn't that be a board discussion of what we want? And not just present us with, this is the way it is?
President, President McKee, once again, this is a start. Corey knows much more about live streaming, much more about the equipment, much more about the audio. He is making suggestions and we're just compiling information to get to the board of trustees for board discussion, for additional clarification on what the board wants to do going forward. So this is, it's a starting point.
Yeah, just like with the old security operation system.
Can you go through it? And he could, and you can, he can see when we go?
Can I forward me the qualifications that you've given him, like what you're looking for?
And Madam President, we didn't specify any specifics. Just like with the security cameras, I let them make a proposal. We were just, had a conversation back and forth and said, hey, that sounds good. Get us some information on that. Tell us what you think.
We can build from there. We're not, I mean, you're looking at us as if.
No, but I.
It's the same thing as we did with the security operations. He's gonna be here next week. We can ask questions, we can say what we want when we don't. It's not installed, it's not a contract.
Okay, but I'm just going with Laura said, it's tailored to what you guys requested. Now you're saying you didn't request.
We don't, and.
Mark, what are you trying to explain?
I'm just trying to understand.
Let me explain it.
We'll talk about it.
Would you mind me be quiet again, Mark? Because I can be quiet again.
No, we can discuss it as, have an agenda item, discuss it when we have. I'm just asking questions based on information.
Right, but we don't.
Don't put words in my mouth.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
We don't know enough about that stuff to provide any kind of parameters for any expectations. We're seeking information, we're seeking advice.
Start.
And so we take the information he gives, it's disseminated to the board of trustees. You can show it to any audio, video people, any other trustee. You can show it to anybody they want to get clarification, you know, and then we just go from there and get to a point where you're comfortable.
And that's what I'm asking for, when you get the information forwarded to me.
And that's what, yes. I will indicate again, yes, we will do that.
Let's move on to the drop lots. In your packet, they presented a drop box. Mr. Johnson, I know you guys, I know you were doing drop lots back when COVID.
Okay, this was an agenda item I was, I brought up and I was questioning.
Okay, well, I want to get a back history. Okay, you will get to talk, Mr. Evans, I'm sorry. But I just want to get a back history of why the drop box came about from COVID. Mr. Johnson, can you present just some information of why you guys decided to go with a drop box with the township?
Well, it started out as putting the mailbox out there, which we still did during COVID because we didn't want to get contacted, people coming into our building. It's part of the protocol. So stuff was left out there. We didn't have people in the office all the time during COVID. So it was like drops and drops to get checked. That way there's only creepers we get taken care of. And correspondence to be back and forth on that. We could make phone calls with information that was given to John through the drop box or the mailbox, they'd weigh it out there. We weren't looking for something more secure since sometimes people wanted to drop checks and different things in there and they're just sitting out in the open. And so we wanted something to lock. They were waiting to pour a slab of concrete out there when the gentleman drove up over the curb and destroyed that part of it. So it is now in port. And now we're moved towards the drop box, looks like.
So Mr. Evans, we want to talk about the drop box that you were.
Yeah, I've been researching this quite a bit. And like I said, when I came in here, this is one of the first things I've mentioned that we should do. I'm glad we found them and forwarded them. But as far as the type they're showing, a lot of drop boxes are not that secure. That arms can get in there, they can fish things out. I believe this was one of them in some of the reviews. So there are much more secure options. I would say this board. So there are much more secure options, I would say, this board should consider in that. So I don't think we need packages and, like I said, to allow the larger stuff. You're opening up to people being able to fish stuff out. And that's, I think, one of the biggest things we have to keep in mind is the security of whatever people place in there. Because I believe we were liable for that. So there, there are a lot of options. We can secure it to the brick, we can secure it on pedestals, but definitely need to, I think, go in a different direction than this drop box here.
Well, you said you brought it to the attention, how long you said back when we started in January, it's first time.
Towards that, it was taught, yeah, because what was being used was a plastic mailbox on a cone, which anything placed in there, anybody could take, it could get wet, it could. Yes, I brought it up before and I brought this up in the agenda prior, if you want to talk about it. But I'm glad we're moving forward, but I, I think we need to be concerned about which one. And even talked to, Potasco's got, got one that's, that's pretty secure. Go with that model or, like I said, there's others. I've done quite a bit of due diligence on this.
Okay, so you got top other than this that you want for all of yours?
Quite a bit, yeah. So I don't know if you're just going to purchase this or.
No, just showing it, just some people can have an idea what we're.
I'm glad we're talking about it, I was going to just get one and install it. By the end of this discussion.
Is this something we put packages from Amazon or something like that, we go in this box too? We need to be accessible.
Originally, you talked about mounting it in that curb, that concrete, but we've got to get which one we can fix.
Right. But as far as, as far as packages, do we get packages after hours to sit out there?
Not usually.
Well, we're not pressing for this one, John.
No, but I'm saying that, should I get one, they have to put a package in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Or we just need an envelope box.
Well, the one before, we only put out when we were here. The one on the pedestal was only used during COVID. It only got put out the door when one of us was here to get, get it out of the mailbox. It didn't sit out there.
Now, there are other options, which I would probably suggest that if it is for a large package, that there are secure containers that once it's open, but once they put it in there and shut it, it's locked. So for the occasional use, I think that'd be better. But again, a lot of these larger ones, items can be fished out that's placed in there. So that would be my concern.
That's why on that one, when I researched, that one opens this way and had a little panel thing in there. But, you know, Mark's welcome to be.
I'll forward this stuff to you guys, Joe, if you can make a decision.
I just know in the past, you did want it mounted on the wall.
It's like a challenge. Get around things, get around bad things.
And if we're doing any concrete work, I would suggest putting a concrete pad somewhere for the agendas posted. Make it a little safer for people.
Okay, under work session, we can move on to office laptops and tablets. We all have laptops, board members. And propose that we have an additional laptop in our possession in case one gets damaged and we can continue to have a laptop available. Also a tablet for our, Mark, Mike, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm so tired right now. For John Singleton or Steve, then to go out into the field, they'll have like a little tablet they can use at their possession. Because he has a actual, a demo in his office there. So if we had the tablet, we could use that when he's out in the field doing work. So we're proposing that we kind of purchase laptops, also talking to Ms. Varian. Her laptop that she has there, it's kind of small for the kind of work that she does. She needs something with a bigger screen. So we, what we could do is have her laptop, buy her, purchase her a new one, then we'll take her laptop and put it in, so we have an additional laptop. So if one of ours is, needs repair, we have an additional laptop in, in our possession. So I was proposing that we may think about looking at some of the laptops and the tablet just to have for the township.
How many laptops excluding Ms. Varian's are you proposing?
Just one, and then a tablet.
So her, her old one plus another?
Her old one plus a tablet.
Oh, so not, so we wouldn't purchase the laptop, except hers?
Right, her laptop will go in as an additional laptop, so we wouldn't have to purchase a laptop now. Okay, all, the only thing that we would have to purchase will be a tablet. We would buy her a new laptop, so her laptop would serve as the additional laptop.
And the spare laptop for in case somebody damages it or Steven needs to take something out, whatever. And then as far as your laptop goes, do you have one in mind or screen size or that would work? Okay.
And it's, the one that would go is, is it a surface, is that what you have now? Do you have a surface?
No, she has the same one we have.
Yeah, it's a surface.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So she would, yeah, that would go as the additional laptop that we would have. She sent a, the specifics on that laptop, and so we can look at it. Actually, I would have Ryan checking to it to see what the cost has been. All right. Any other announcements on the trustee comments?
I just wanted to see if the board is open to having a discussion about Pike Street and the extent of the proposal right now and what the plan is for the area and that. If you can do a work session, a separate work session, speak with the community. Are you guys up for that?
Well, I can say this, Mike, Mark, I have spoke to several people in the community of Pike Street. From one side, which should be considered phase two, and this is five years of considered phase one. So I spoke to many people I took before and went up on doors and talked to various people on Pike Street.
Well, I'm talking about speaking as a board and speaking with the residents.
Right, and so what we want to do in the future, because remember, we applied for the law, doesn't mean we want to get the law. But I would like to see in the future us bringing the community in here to have an open discussion of Pike Street. That would be a good thing to do.
Right, and I'm proposing to do that next month. Are you willing to participate in that?
President McKee, if appropriate, just some information for the board of trustees associated with this discussion. Morpsy, we submitted a preliminary grant application. So Morpsy is going to take a look at it, they're going to provide feedback in middle August as to whether or not they're going to invite at the township to submit a final application. So a suggestion would be to wait until you get that feedback from Morpsy and then decide what sort of public process may be necessary. Because it all might be muted if it's not getting forward.
You don't get the grant.
Well, I, I think we should determine what, number one, what is this area going to be? We haven't had a board discussion about that, what the residents really want. It, it went from a street with some parking and just normal sidewalks to a seven foot and a 10 foot sidewalk just because of the funding. And that should be a reason to just do it. So I, I think we should have a discussion with the community, show them where it's going to land in there, get their feedback, and the more information you have, the better. So all I'm asking is, do, would you two would like to participate? If one does, we need to have an official meeting. But if you don't want to participate, you don't have to. But I'd like to move forward and get a discussion with the area residents in that in August. And I'm proposing August 25th, I'm inviting the board. So would you like to make an official work session? Or would you like me to just move forward on my own and do this?
You can move forward on your own if you like, but I'm going to wait and see if we're going to get the grant money. We're just, like, like I said, we are, we just applied, it was not granted to us. Why go forward if we don't want to get the money? We have to have the money in order for us to do the project. So right now, this is a preliminary, we're not, we're not guaranteed.
But we were moving forward, it was supposed to move forward without even the federal funding. And that's why I'm saying, do we want to and do we want to do it on that side? All I'm saying is, public participation is great. Getting that feedback, there was the rest of the last time, that's all for it, that's great. Maybe there's some not, and I'm not saying we should do it or not. But that's why I'm proposing, August 25th, I'll be here six to eight with information and we can have that discussion with the public and I'll get that information. I apparently will not be an official trustee meeting.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm, I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.